And thank you all for your work and thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am not connected with any energy companies. My name is Betsy Hart. I am coordinator of Vermont Interfaith Powerlight, a nonprofit working to address the climate crisis with communities of faith statewide. For me and others we work with, this is a moral and spiritual issue. The climate crisis is seriously impacting people and ecosystems worldwide. And the poor are being heard first and worst. Our actions, particularly the burning of fossil fuels, is a large part of what's causing the crisis. We need to take significant steps to turn this around. Reducing the use of energy through conservation and energy efficiency is very important. And it's important to switch from using fossil fuels to using clean renewable energy. My home enrichment is also the office of Vermont Interfaith Powerlight. It has a solar array on the roof and is now being heated by cold climate heat pumps. Fossil fuels are no longer needed at my home. In recent years, the legislature has passed good legislation such as the net metering bill to help Vermonters go solar. I hope you will continue to encourage not thwart solar energy in Vermont. Along with energy conservation and energy efficiency, solar and other renewables offer ways to take significant steps to address the climate crisis. Community solar arrays are also important. Not everyone has good solar access on their property. These arrays provide clean, safe, renewable solar energy for Vermont communities. I love our land, I love all creation, and want to keep our world livable for humanity, all beings, and future generations. Please continue to encourage solar energy. Thank you.
Next is Dwayne Peterson, followed by Bob Walker and David Litterstorf.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Peterson. I'm one of the co-founders of Sun Common, and I proudly say that. Sun Common is a Vermont benefit corporation. We are purpose, values-led market solution to climate change. We believe that all Vermonters have the right to a healthy environment and a safer world, and clean energy is a good place to start. We found that solar power now can power our lives, heat our homes, and fuel our cars. So our mission is to knock down the barriers that have made renewable energy inaccessible. And we do that by making it easy and affordable so that all Vermonters can be part of repowering our state. We apply a community organizing approach to sharing this opportunity to finally make it easy and affordable for Vermonters to go solar. We're just three years old. When we started, there were 1,500 solar arrays built in Vermont in the past decade, and we've added 1,200. We have 100 people working for us. And the money we're saving, our fellow Vermonters, will add up to tens of millions of dollars. We're very proud of the work that we do. One of the things that we've discovered, though, is that we've excited a lot of people now about the opportunity to go solar, but we have to say to about 35% of them that we can't help them. Their roots are unsuitable for solar. They face east-west, or they're in the trees. They don't have ground mount opportunity in their yards. We hate saying no to Vermonters who want to help build our clean energy economy. So we created a community solar array approach. We call it CSAs. And so Vermont is one of only a handful of states in the country that has the sense to allow so-called group net metering. A bunch of electricity customers can benefit from a single solar array. So we have homeowners, we have landowners, we have farmers who are willing to dedicate a slice of their land, maybe an acre, to help provide clean energy to 30 of their neighbors. The CSA program is tremendously popular. Thank you.
Next is Bob Walker, followed by David Litterstorf and Diana Leeser.
Good evening. I'm Bob Walker from Brownings. Let's talk to the guests. I'm a native from on four generations, and I have a degree in common sense. I came here to say that I don't believe we need either solar or wind as a source of power here in Vermont. Hydroelectric power is available to us, is renewable, and is environmentally friendly while at the same time being a less expensive way for us to go to satisfy the needs of our state. I want to continue briefly with my opinion regarding what I see happening in Vermont. I sincerely believe that we are now the most liberal state in the country. It is my feeling that the leadership we are presently experiencing is supposed to be in the dictatorship. Our governor has the authority to appoint a committee and a board such as yourself. Then if he has a conflict of interest with a utility in Vermont and you don't agree with him, he has the power to replace you with those who do agree. For some time, Vermont has been growing down a slippery slope with a runaway threat as far as our state government is concerned. Before I implore you as a board to please think seriously about issues which come before you, considering each and every long-term effort your decisions might possibly have on all Vermonters, before voting on them, do not just blindly follow the leader of the governor. We should all be proud to live in this state and should have the strength and courage to think for ourselves. I had a head-on collision 16 months ago. I had a tree find in Brownings and one in Barton, and I was on my back in a nursing home. We have 44 acres. I have some mental problems from a head-on collision. I was not allowed to testify. So once I got out, nobody was in favor of the solar panels in Barton whatsoever except the developer and the zoning people. They said that was in compliance. You people came along, and put 10,000 panels 500 feet from my farm and said I would not be allowed to come in and testify. I won't thank you for letting me be here. Thank you very much.
We are elected, we're not appointed, sir, and I just want you to know that because we represent all the people. And I don't know if you're accepted, but I just want you to know that.
You represent all the people?
Yeah.
My problem, well, undone. Let's hold my two minutes. Here's my paperwork.
Thank you, sir.
By John.
You can get out of that chair if you need me to come help you.
I'm okay. You don't want to lift 209,000.
Next is David Litterstorf, followed by Diana Leeser and Representative Tom Perenzini.
Thank you. My name is David Litterstorf. I've been in the wind and solar business for 34 years, a native Vermonter. We're up here, and I'm very proud of what Vermont is doing. We have led on many issues for the nation, and we are now leading the nation on solar and renewable energy. We put in place, and I'm proud to say, I've worked many years with the legislature, put in place the first very good net metering laws, especially group net metering. It was a concept 10 years ago that was far-fetched, but we made it happen. We put in standard offer, a feed-in tariff program that was a first in the nation, so we led again. We also put in place a registration program for solar, a first in the nation again. Other states have never done this. Germany does this sort of thing, but no state has ever done it. So we are leading, and it would be really sad with climate change and with finite resources like oil peaking that we would back away from what we're doing today. We must continue on, and we must continue doing this in a less complex way, not more complex. The registration program for net metering came about, one of my testimonies before the legislature was, how completely permit good things? And we register bad things. And I suggested at the time, why don't we start permitting SUVs and gas dozen cars and see how long that would take to register a car? Probably a year or more. So these are things that we're doing right, and we can't back away from doing the right things. And, thank you.
Next is Diana Leeser, followed by Representative Tom Perenzini and Suzanne Sawyer.
My name is Diana Leeser, and I'm a landowner in Bennington. I'm committed to responsible stewardship of my land, my town, and my state. Solar power, among other renewable energy sources, contribute to that end. However, proper placement of solar arrays also contribute to responsible stewardship of our land. I'm not here to debate the merits of solar power. I am here to comment on the process by which facilities are permitted. Bennington, Woodford, and Woodford, to my understanding, have three solar arrays in process. It is also my understanding that developers must notify the butters of impending selection. The property owners in my neighborhood of Bennington were not notified until heavy equipment rumbled through and unloaded in order to begin excavation of what they thought incorrectly was gale right of way. Throughout this solar odyssey, our voices have not been heard. This, for me, is an issue of civil liberty. Citizens' voices need to be heard, considered, and valued.
If Representative Perenzini, I wonder if you might be willing to speak to the committee since you're in the building every day and give your spot for folks who have traveled?
Well, I just wish you would have said something before the hearing because I've got to drive an hour and 15 minutes home now.
Well, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're only getting two minutes. You're in the building every day, and the rest of these people travel to be here.
So let's jump right in.
You all done? You all done? Okay. I'm going to get my two minutes here.
Good evening. My name is Tom Perenzini. I have the privilege of representing the town of Brooklyn in this district chamber. Brooklyn Town does not oppose solar energy, nor is it included in the mix of renewable sources for the benefit of our citizens. What we do oppose is the thought of any one entity, be it Green Mountain Power, Grow Solar, Brooklyn Economic Development Corporation, or, with all due respect, our own public service board, should have the right to unilaterally determine what our town should look like and what the future of our residential development should be. In that regard, I am absolutely sure that an overwhelming majority of our townspeople do not want industrial solar along every highway and highway near and adjacent to their neighbors. Indeed, adhering to reasonable standards developed by our community as part of the planning process has been the hallmark of both local control and planning policy, which has made Vermont a pride of all citizens and the envy of an entire country. For sure, there is a place for industrial solar. And sure as I am of that statement, I am equally sure that it certainly is not the right of the industry to determine where and how that happens. With a clear, specific set of solar facility siting standards, which are legitimately adopted part of our town plan, we are certain that we have met the parameters of the CUICHI analysis in developing clear guidelines duly adopted by a legitimate vote of the only body elected by our citizens to do so. After all this due deliberative process, even including a site visit by the entire PSB themselves, the town of Brooklyn's legitimate concerns were virtually ignored by insulting decision by appointed officials, the PSB against the will and which is an entire community represented by elected officials, the select board. Thank you very much.
Senator, this is a consultation.
Thank you very much.
Next is Suzanne Sawyer, followed by Brock Givian and Greg Isner.
My name is Suzanne Sawyer, and I'm from Lakeview, Vermont. And a few years ago, my husband and I recovered from a dairy farm, and we're trapped. He says it's passed, it's just recently. And we were trying to keep our family farm as a farm and keep it in the family. And we, our farm has found that a solar project would be a great idea in our farm sector. And we would, we are working with a company right now that is studying the project well, and they're trying to work with other people along with us. The public standpoint, the project is naturally screened on three sides and does not affect the wetlands and helps reduce the need for fossil fuel. We are on the personal side. It allows our farm, which has been in the family for over 100 years, to stay in the farm with me and my children. And we also have a three-phase power line that goes right to my property. And I encourage you to consider this project as looking for solar in Vermont.
Next is Brock Givian, followed by Greg Isner and then Don Cummings.
Thank you for having me. My name is Brock Givian, and I saw a little boy over there, but other than that, I believe I am the second youngest person to be present today. I have a 20-year-old junior at the University of Vermont pursuing a dual degree in mathematics and economics. I love Vermont because of its sense of community and buying local products, its love for the outdoors, and its focus on sustainability. These three reasons were the most important to me and many others like me. Climate change is a fact, and is already occurring from the massive storms such as Sandy and Irene to the huge pollution problems we face in other parts of the country and the world. The younger generation of which I am a part of and the generation after us will be inheriting a truly beautiful world. But a world that is being destroyed by our current lifestyles in which we use, 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 but refuse, refuse, refuse to do our part to harness locally generated energy. I believe the majority to be friendly of solar energy, but by creating additional siting standards, we are effectively limiting an opportunity that has created growth through jobs and investment, created more energy independence and reliability in our grid, and is doing our part for climate change. This is an opportunity to pioneer our new sustainable economic industry that will bring real jobs and opportunities to attract and retain our great workforce. Many graduates are finding it harder than ever to find a job after college, especially in Vermont, and many studying my field will find it even harder if legislation surrounding solar siting creates even more barriers to growth. When I drive by larger solar arrays, I see a tool that can bring awareness and education to Vermonters about where their energy actually comes from and the environmental and economic impacts of said energy. A Chinese poet once said, "If you are thinking a year ahead, sow a seed. If you are thinking 10 years ahead, plant a tree. If you are thinking 100 years ahead, educate the people." We need to encourage solar adoption and the education on the impacts of energy to look to the future of our people, our state, our country, and our world. We need to realize the true potential we have to be a force for positive change in our global environment and act.
Next is Greg Isner, followed by Don Cummings.
I shouldn't be speaking. I'm not sure why I'm on the list.
Okay, I'm sorry. Next is Don Cummings, followed by Marcy Wizniewski, and then Paul Stone.
Good evening. I'm Don Cummings. I'm from South Burlington. I'm a member of the South Burlington Energy Committee, but I'm speaking for myself tonight. There's been a lot of discussion about sustainability. In my view, the biggest issue in sustaining life as we know it is how we slow the progress of climate change. The fact that Vermont's current electricity portfolio produces very little CO2 is a point of pride for most of us. Those sources of power do have their own impacts, however. A major portion of GMP's power comes from hydroelectric, which has been developed at the expense of hundreds of thousands of acres of northern Quebec, impacting the land that the native peoples wanted to protect. Another part of our energy supply comes from Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant, a power plant that is sited near hundreds of thousands of people. Our peak energy requirements are met through other energy producers on the New England grid, facilities impacting the livelihood of the many people living near them, and those that are far away where the fossil fuels that power them are produced through strip mines, mountaintop removal, through drilling for gas and oil that produces huge amounts of waste byproducts and contaminants that surround the landscape and water supports. Some will argue we don't need to do anything because our power is low-carbon. However, if Vermont can save energy through conservation and efficiency, and if we can generate some of our own local renewable energy, some of that low CO2 power can be sent elsewhere to help others reduce their power contribution. Solar rooftops under the right conditions can be an exo-pointed generated electricity and should be promoted, but there are many considerations to this development. The roof must be oriented properly, unshaded for most of the day, and must be new or newly new, and so as to last as long as the array. They are important but are limited in their impact. The best option for renewable is land-based solar. It is time for Vermont to take responsibility for its energy we use, except that solar has far fewer impacts than the energy sources we currently rely on. Thank you.
Next is Marcy Wizniewski, followed by Paul Stone and then Cory Decker.
Good evening. My name is Marcy Wizniewski, and I am in opposition to the installation of 25 all-stump sun trackers by a third-party developer in a field owned by Basin Harbor Club that orders our property on Mile Point Road in Ferrisburg. Mile Point is a beautiful scenic historic shoreline community, many properties having been passed down through generations from the 1800s. By the time our group was notified of the application for the solar installation, it was on the fast track. We believe the developer was working to get this completed in order to get a 2014 tax rate. Basin Harbor has over 700 acres. We suggested they find an alternative spot for the project, but were told this was the most desirable location as it was not visible to their guests, keeping the entrance for Basin Harbor pristine and attractive. We expressed concerns with the proximity of the panels to their compost area, which draws a large single population. We worried about the glare from the trackers as a safety issue to their airfield. These concerns were dismissed in a process that was hurried and clearly favored the applicant. A letter was sent to the PSB informing them that this installation was near several historic sites. A halt was requested asserting the applicant had falsely answered this question on the application. The inquiry was launched five weeks after receiving this letter. By then, the installation was complete. The hurry of nature of this project and the disregard for the negative impact on our properties is troubling. Maverick and the developer and Basin Harbor Club will benefit, while Mile Point property values are adversely impacted, westerly views obscured, and a once pastoral view, a sea of metal. We live in Vermont. We work hard to pay our exorbitant taxes and maintain our property. We are business owners ourselves and wonder at what point did the good neighbor policy in Vermont make an exception for out-of-state developers to take advantage of inadequate policy and run over local Vermonters?
Next is Paul Stone, followed by Cory Decker and Charles Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Paul Stone. I'm a farmer in the town of Orwell in Addison County. I served on the Orwell Planning Commission for 18 years and on the select board for 12 years. I was commissioner of agriculture in 1985, 1986, when we oversaw and oversaw the department's responsibilities for protecting agricultural lands in Act 250 process. Vermont has spent many millions of dollars on planning at the town, the regional, and the state level. Vermont has benefited from hundreds of thousands of hours of volunteer people hours striving toward good planning. Vermont has concerned agriculture and forest lands by acquiring development rights and buying land at fee simple. Now comes the Public Service Board with unchecked power to place solar installations anywhere at their pleasure without regard to any input from any planning or regard to productive agricultural soil. Plain and simple, solar installations are development and are othering. They are being built right in our face, on the edge of roads, close to neighbors, in the view path, at most egregious weight on productive agricultural soils. And Vermont could do better than this. I propose that the town and regional planning efforts be respected and that they should have the sole determination of where solar installations are placed. And Public Service Board should not have any jurisdiction for siting even the large installations. I propose that the legislature take away from Public Service Board all responsibility for solar installations. That way, we can discuss with our neighbors, citing issues such as we do now for other developments. And if solar makes sense for a community, then it can be permitted. And maybe this will slow down the development of solar systems, and that could be a good thing. I am not at all convinced that our answer to getting off fossil fuels by 2050 can be rooted in the massive development of solar energy.
Next is Cory Decker, followed by Charles Kelly and Aaron Tyreball.
Thank you to everybody here tonight in the committee and everybody who drove from great distances. My name is Cory Decker. I live in Fletcher, and I am a super homeowner. Solar has helped me create an economically sustainable future for myself in Vermont. After I purchased my home nearly three years ago, I explore solar as a way of creating predictable energy costs for myself now and significant savings in the future. Solar is a way for me to make an investment in my home and save money and also do right by the environment, as I believe we are all stewards of the environment. A win-win-win. So when I got my first bill, and it had a creative number and big, huge "do not pay" and bold letters, I burst into tears, and I said, "I have begins in my kitchen." It was an amazing feeling. Solar was working for me. I want others to be able to experience the same joy that I felt when I went solar. I'm fortunate to be in a great spot that allows for solar, but I know that many Vermonters are not in a similar position for whatever reason, whether they be in the trees, live in historic homes, or just aren't situated appropriately. These larger arrays serve a greater community of Vermonters that otherwise wouldn't be able to access clean solar energy. I want others to have the same satisfaction that I felt and to have the same opportunity to give back to Vermont. Community solar arrays support Vermont and Vermonters. Change is real, and change is happening. This is an opportunity for Vermonters to join it. We can invest in our energy future today, read the reports for years to come, and when we've developed an even more innovative solution, these arrays are easily plucked from the ground and our treasured meadows return to their current state. A community solar array is a placeholder for Vermont's next clean energy chapter. An array protects our lands from harmful development while providing a necessary resource that supports our energy future. The spirit of stoicism, independence, and Yankee ingenuity is furthered by the opportunity for Vermont landowners to use their land for community solar arrays, this new working landscape for Vermont. I will leave the rest of my comments here, but I am thank you for your participation.
Next is Charles Kelly, followed by Aaron Tyreball, and then Leonard Duffy.
Good evening. My name is Charles Kelly. I'm from the town of Addison and a member of the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking tonight for myself. I want to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak, particularly Representative Van Rick for his notice in front porch form about this meeting. As an individual, I've spent 34 years of my career in energy, in the energy field. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Vermont. I tell you this so you know that I take energy seriously and its production. My concerns are, I see little information of detailed solar plan or periodic progress reports that give me confidence that the siting of solar arrays, as they are now being proliferated, are actually going to replace the loss of central generated power. I do not see an in-depth I do not see an in-depth economic analysis that shows that this decentralization approach is both doable and with regard to the pronounced RE goals and affordable for the average Vermont. Citing solar arrays are being done without regard to the planning goals of municipalities. The Public Service Board is approving projects without properly considering the impact on our property values, aesthetics, non-solar economic development, with no site visits. The Public Service Board is usurping our rights to procedural due process as stated in the U.S. Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments. Developers are leapfrogging along three-phase arteries at will. Lastly, the intermittence of solar energy production coupled with the production limits that utilities can absorb during peak times will make electric storage necessary in a 95% RE environment. I do not see anything in the legislature for RCE plans for addressing citing of electric storage units now or in the future.
Next is Aaron Heiergall, followed by Leonard Duffy and Norine Hessen.
Hi. My name is Aaron Heiergall, I'm a homeowner here in Vermont in October, and I am in the energy industry. I work for Suncom, and I'm proud to say that. Every day I go out and help folks do their own individual part to change the energy that's taken from us for better. I have a statement from a woman who unfortunately had to leave, so I'll just read it for you. Hello, my name is Molly Magnum of Fairfield. Our family dairy farm has been farming since 1924. In that time, we've survived major fluctuations in milk prices by being scrupulous with our budget. The enormous swing in milk prices in the past twelve months has made us look at every line item in our budget very critically. Anytime we can lock in an item in our budget, anytime we can lock in a permanent price for any line item is seriously considerable. This attention to destabil is necessary to continue a viable business. While building and maintaining our own array of solar panels is not realistic for our farm, hosting an array gives us the opportunity to provide our budget with a fixed electrical rate and offer our neighbors the same advantage. Suncom's community solar arrays are a perfect fit for our needs. The land chosen for the community solar array is not desirable or productive format. One parcel was nested on a steep hill with low-lined electric lines, making the use of tractors and hanging equipment difficult and dangerous. We take very seriously our role of being good stewards of the land. We're realistic in seeing the connection between global climate destabilization and the burning of fossil fuels. If we have the ability and the opportunity to create an alternative energy source that will positively impact our bottom line and the community in which we live, it's the responsible thing to do. Solar power is a benefit to Vermont, and the programs are working. Let's keep Vermont moving forward with community solar projects.
Next is Leonard Duffy, followed by Norine Hessen, and then Ernest May.
Hi, I'm Leonard Duffy from Heinsberg. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this important mission. As you know, Vermonters have worked very hard for generations to maintain the integrity of our working rural landscape. We've eliminated billboards, cleaned up roadside trash, screened our junkyards, and enacted strict state and local aesthetic controls. So having worked within the spirit of these rules for more than 40 years as an architect, land planner, and a member of local and regional planning commissions, I was totally dismayed to recently drive by another large-scale industrial power plant suddenly sprung up at one of the most pristine view sheds along our incredibly beautiful interstate highway. In a mere couple of years, these developments have already had a greater negative impact on the appearance of our state than all of the normal development of the past generation, apparently all for the primary benefit of out-of-state investors. And it's far from over. Not only are more and more of these industrial complexes appearing on our bucolic landscape, but as they begin to age, the popple will sprout up, the corrosion will take over, the trackers will gradually stop tracking. Front-end loaded subsidies in an industry of rapidly changing technology provide little incentive to maintain or eventually decommission such diminishing investments. Sunshine is not Vermont's most abundant natural resource. Just as we buy oranges, cars, solar panels from places that can produce them more efficiently, we can also purchase a marginal amount of power these projects produce. We should utilize our limited sunshine to enhance our tourists in agricultural industries, not to degrade them. Although I do believe there are appropriate places for solar power plants, please, 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 at least restore local and Act 250 controls over these industrial solar developments immediately. We have already irredeemably lost too much of our incredible world-renowned earnings. Thank you. I submitted a longer version. I hope you all want to hear it.
I was just wondering, my question, procedural question, that was the second time that somebody from the industry had read a letter from somebody that wasn't here, and I was just wondering if that was a proffer.
We don't have rules cut quite that fine. If someone wants to speak for someone else, we'll speak to them.
How do you know it's? Next, we have Norine Hessen, followed by Ernest May, and then Diane Derrick.
Hi, I'm Norine Hessen, I live in Newark. I want to thank the committee for holding tonight's hearing on citing. I understand close to a dozen citing bills have been introduced this session, which means Vermont legislators are aware there's a citing problem. I'm grateful to those of you who will follow through and address this problem. I'm disappointed that H40, a bill designed to address renewable energy issues in Vermont, managed to get through the House without addressing citing. I believe any renewable energy bill that doesn't address citing concerns does Vermont a disservice. I need to tell you I'm not a climate change denier, I'm an environmentalist, my home is powered by solar, and I believe we do have a responsibility to deal with climate change, but we need to do it in smart, honest, effective, and fair ways, ways that don't just bring large profits to investors, developers, and multinational corporations while damaging Vermont, Vermonters in our communities. When my town was targeted by a renewable energy developer, Governor Shumlin went on record and said town should be able to vote, but surely you must know that our votes are meaningless, and when we say no, our votes are routinely ignored by developers in the PSV. Under the current process, town plans are meaningless, under the current process, regional plans are meaningless, under the current process, we have exempted an entire class of development from local and regional plans. Merchant developers propose projects which are ushered through the PSV. The PSV ignores the towns and neighbors because they believe you, the legislature, want them to rubber stamp the projects. It's a permitting process, right? So the needs of individuals, communities, and regions are ignored. How can the process be improved? Towns have a right to influence the ways in which they're developed. That's not happening now. Pass legislation so that when towns and communities use legal tools available to them, the town and regional plans, then those documents are dispositive. The failure of Vermont's citing practices to take the wishes of towns into consideration is causing a backlash. I have more to say, and I will submit it in writing.
Next is Ernest May, followed by Diane Derrick and Robert Kishko.
Thank you, and hello, my name is Ernest May, I live in South Burlington, a residential neighborhood that has several homes with solar panels, one with solar hot water, and I can say with confidence that it's solar. The look for practicality and the long-term necessity of it all is incredibly appealing not just to myself, but my wife and neighbors as well. In fact, a group of us are currently in discussions of how the neighborhood could come together and bring more solar to our corner of South Burlington. The issue today is over the aesthetics of solar, well, the landscapes that define estates. From what I've experienced, solar can be very appealing on a home, it doesn't necessarily have to be front and center. Even if it is, the low-profile nature of the residential panels does not distract from the overall appeal of the home or surrounding property. In fact, for the current generation looking to buy homes for the first time, solar panels would add value to a property for both the seller and purchaser. Folks in my generation are forward-thinking, they strive for more sustainable ways of living. While searching for a home to buy, my wife and I, if my wife and I had seen a home with solar already installed, that would have been the one for us. Instead, we are actively looking at ways to add solar to the home we did buy with our neighbors as inspiration. When it comes to solar farms and the mark they would leave on the landscape, I would rather see solar arrays in the Green Mountains than read about oil and gas pipelines cutting through the middle of our country. I would rather see solar provides a sustainable energy for our estates than read about another mountaintop being severed for coal. I would rather see solar in the fields off 89 than continue the endless energy wars in the Middle East. The sun has four billion years worth of energy, why would we not want to harness that? And why would we approve of legislation that prevents us from moving towards energy that does? Thank you.
Next is Diane Derrick, followed by Robert Kishko and Diane Nirmek. I'm happy to give my two minutes to the next person. Okay, then next is Robert Kishko, followed by Diane Nirmek and Steve Karian.
Thank you very much, it's a pleasure to be here. I had the pleasure several years ago to address the Senate Committee on Natural Resources and Energy. At that time, I spoke on biomass for electricity and the fact that I challenged that committee, and I challenged this committee, and I challenged the Senate and the House to consider citing as a major issue in the state of Vermont. That was very apparent to myself as I took a nice ride up from Springfield this afternoon and happened to see four, three large industrial-scale developments. And I can remember a governor telling us not that many years ago that we shouldn't consider clustering development on the interstate. And we got into a discussion in the car, where are we coming from from this? I think it was maybe Governor Dean that tried to say, "We don't want to develop along the interstate because of the natural beauty of our state." I also want to point out that I urge the state to encourage solar developers, but to encourage them to do more. There was somebody who testified earlier, we should be looking at rooftops, box stores, municipal state buildings for solar energy. Those are ideal sightings in most cases where we can develop solar energy responsibly. I've got a number of other things that I want to talk about, but I think, to the point being that I think it's very important for the state to cite large industrial solar projects. And I put in my notes here that we should look at landfills and quarries as a possible alternative to site base and not impact as many homeowners, as I've heard tonight, being impacted by large solar. And I'll relinquish the last few minutes of my time to the next person, thank you. And I will email my notes.
Next is Diane Nirmek, followed by Steve Karian and Larry Richburg.
Thank you. My name is Diane Nirmek, I'm from Starksborough, Vermont. I agree with a lot of people here in this room, like to see solar on houses, I'd like to see them, you know, on rooftops or wherever they can be in places that doesn't become industrial. I see that Vermont Public Research Group today is in full force to support renewable energy and to fight against global warming. The rest of us here are pleading for some semblance of democracy and to weigh in whether we even need renewables or whether we want to trade our environment for them, and if so, help decide where they should be cited. The Vermont Public Research Group has informed and inspired in the past to protect and advocate for the rights of Vermonters, but for the last few years, they have acted like energy lobbyists, pretty much pushing through their agenda on global warming, and have made some of us look as though we have been dragging our heels in the fight for global warming and construction for more renewables. Believe me, I have not been dragging my heels. I have been fighting to keep our mountains, our hills, and prime agricultural land from being blown up and covered up by runaway projects. This unchecked energy sprawl spreading over Vermont was fueled by the speed program. Now the reset program is before us. The ironic note here is this, the underpinning of these renewables will be backed up by natural gas. In theory, Vermont's renewable goals of being independent of fossil fuels, natural gas is a bad boy, but the resistance to this natural gas is of only lip service only. I appeal to the Agency of Natural Resources and the Vermont Natural Resource Council to continue their work in protecting Vermont with vigilance that includes the input of all Vermonters. I appeal to the Vermont Legislature, the Governor's Office, and the Public Service Board to grant us, the people of Vermont, the towns of Vermont, I'll be right there, and the Regional Planning Commissions the transparency and the democracy to participate in the process of how we want to use these renewable project proposals and to judge its merits. We, the people, need to be satisfied that we are, in reality, a part of the democratic process.
Next is Steve Karian, followed by Larry Richburg and Peter Rothchild.
Hello, my name is Steve Karian, originally from Sheffield up to three months ago, now moved to Derby. I am all for solar, I am for wind, but on very small scale. Large-scale, corporation-driven, owned, unacceptable. They come in, they do their own fact-winding, they do their own sound studies, and as I'm understanding, as far as solar goes, they get to do all their studying to it and everything's okay. I was forced out of my home. The wind company keeps saying that they are in compliance. They do their own sound studies. Reportedly, I called them up and told them they were out of compliance because I had a sound monitor, and caught them out of compliance, told the state they were out of compliance. Three years went on, nothing. If we're going to have a problem with these large projects and we're not going to hold them accountable, standards have to be tightened up. These companies need to be held accountable. If a town's going to let them in, the town should be held accountable. If a community wants to put a solar array and there's going to be other homeowners affected, they need to be held accountable. Either compensate, don't do the project, or figure it out before you do it in. Don't create bad wealth. Don't destroy your neighbor's home. It's not their place. I don't care if it's somebody's land and they want to do what they want with their land. I'm sorry, you have neighbors. You don't like your neighbors? Well then, why don't you move by enough to be slain somewhere else to do what you want with the neighbor, the neighbors accept it. That is simply, we're destroying our state, we're destroying our communities, and it's a lot of it with the big corporations, it's all for their money gain. I find it, again, unacceptable. And by the way, after three months of moving away from the wind project, my kid's eyes have cleared up, color has come back to him. We were tortured for three years. Do people like seeing kids tortured? Put more of these projects out.
Next is Larry Richburg, followed by Peter Rothchild and Dan Barlow.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Larry Richburg, I'm the Chair of the Randolph Select Board and also the Chair of the Randolph Energy Committee. I want to speak on behalf of solar energy. I've been a clean energy proponent for most of my life. Built a passive solar home many years ago. I believe that the sun and the energy from the sun is going to be the energy, not only for the state of Vermont and in our country, but also the whole planet. We need to move in this direction and we need to make it happen. And the quicker we do that, the better off we'll all be. I know there's inconvenience and there's compromises that we all have to make through this, and for a lot of things. We may have to give up- We may have to give up some of our convenient lifestyle to start doing the way with the fossil fuels and driving our car everywhere we go, but the sacrifices have to be made if we want this planet to continue. Thank you.
Next is Peter Rothschild, followed by Dan Barlow and James Pepper.
My name is Peter Rothschild. I'm from New Haven, which is ground zero for solar development. And I'm going to digress from my material, which I've left with you, and just make a couple of quick comments. I'm going to be one of the few people, maybe the only one, who actually has some concrete suggestions for solar citing, because I thought that you came here for. One would be to adopt a good neighbor policy, which is a freestanding solar array should be cited so that the array creates no greater burden on the neighboring property owners for public infrastructure than it does on the property in which it is cited. We have seen multiple cases of 150 CSA's projects proposed for New Haven, which violated that. Despite the comments that citing is done carefully, it has not been the case. There are good lawsuits, and in many cases, the projects finally were abandoned. So we think that's important, keeps social comity in the town. The other is a thought that we have and I have, which is the creation of a solar park, which we are changing in the wording of Section 248 Title 30, in which we would like to see a solar park where a site that would co-locate a number of separately-owned 150 to 500 KW solar installations sharing a common infrastructure. Be more cost-effective for developers to cite CSA with a solar park. Will provide CSA sites for towns who find it extremely difficult to cite locally. Because my vision of a solar park includes and often a town government, the likelihood of negatives associated with poor citing will be severely diminished. This requires a change in the language. You know what it is, and I think it's reasonably easy to do. I think we would find that will move the ball forward. Thank you.
Next is Dan Barlow, followed by James Pepper, and then Scott Woodward.
Thank you very much to the committees. My name is Dan Barlow. I'm the public policy manager with Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility. We are a statewide business organization with seven hundred and fifty members, and this year we're celebrating our twenty-fifth anniversary, so happy birthday to us. I wanted to start off by saying, BDSR strongly supports the goal of the 2011 Comprehensive Energy Plan to get Vermont to ninety percent renewable by 2050. We think this is an achievable goal, but it really will mean changing a lot of the ways that we live our life right now. We'll change the way we eat our homes, we bring electricity to our buildings, and how we commute to work. So we do support the renewable energy goal. Because of that, we do think that energy citing should remain with the Public Service Board. There's a few reasons for that. First of all, the Public Service Board, you have a level of consistency that will bridge many governors, administrations, and legislatures because of that in terms. So that provides some consistency in long-term vision. Also, we think the process we have right now is working pretty well. Projects are changed based on input, and the PSD overview covers things that Act 250 would not. We also believe that quasi-judicial statewide policy is in a better position to make decisions about statewide electricity needs and to balance the need for more renewable energy with local concerns. So we do think this is a good venue to make energy decisions by. That said, we do recognize that participating in PSD hearings is often very difficult or refusing for citizens and even some towns, so we do support efforts to bring more citizens into this process, to get them educated and have, create the ability for them to interact with the PSD hearings. You know, with good input, good projects can become great projects. So often, you know, community input can make projects better. You know, a lot of BDSR members who are in this field, they do adhere to the good neighbors policy, and they work with the communities and neighbors to craft projects that, you know, do fit the footprint of the, thank you very much.
Next is James Pepper, followed by Scott Woodward, and then Jack McCarthy.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to be here. My name is James Pepper. I work at SunCom, and I deal with permitting around community solar arrays. I think I'd like to take my time to dig a little bit deeper into the citing issues, go with base, goes well beyond the Public Service Board's criteria. You know, initially, we look for areas that have at least some acre of open land. They need to avoid rare endangered species. They need to avoid wetlands, streams, rivers. They need to avoid historic sites. They need to be on land that is not under conservation even. They need to have access to true face power. They need to have a willing landowner. And, you know, if you have the good fortune to find those sites, then we immediately take our case to the town. We send letters to all abutting landowners. We set up meetings at the Planning Commission, the Select Board. We seek their input. We look for screening options that work for folks. And once we've done all that, then we begin our Public Service Board proceedings. It's not, you know, as kind of easy as some people have made it out to be. And I'd also just like to mention about kind of the way that we install our solar projects. It's somewhat minimally invasive. We put our racking systems into the ground. We don't use a concrete footing. You know, when we pull them out of the ground at the end of twenty-five or forty years, we fill back in the holes. We don't use any pesticides. We don't use any fertilizer. The soil is the same, is in the original condition as when we found it. It's almost like we were never there.